I wonder where I live. So, been it built my house, but I'm in the forerunners in the poor folks section. But I am in a brick house. First ones he built, really. See what I'm writing down here? I didn't spell that right. Yeah. Is that better?
Yes.
Oh, what information. Oh, mine. I told you, I'll do it. Okay.
I'll call this meeting to order on Monday, June the 5th, 2017. Want to welcome everyone, very glad to have with us tonight Pastor Corey Hallett from the Cover Bridge Church at 225 Fontaine Road, who will come forward at this time, lead us or give our invocation and also lead us in the place to play. But everyone, please rise.
All right, join me with the invocation. Father, I thank you for this city, I thank you that I'm able to call this home. Lord, I thank you that you have blessed this city richly, I pray you would continue to do so. God, thank you for the leadership that you put in place, I pray that you would draw them close to you, give them wisdom as they make decisions, and it's in your son's name we pray, amen. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And for those folks, the Cover Bridge Church is located on Fontaine Road, right off the East-West Connector. I'm sure if you're looking for a new church or new into town or want something different, they'd love to have you, so thank you very much. Agenda changes, we have none under the mayor's report, there's no mayor's report tonight. Land issues, zonings and annexations, nothing. Item 5 is privileged licenses, 6 formal business, A is a public hearing, FY 2018 proposed budget. Ms. Tammy Sadler Jones, will you please give us the background?
Yes, thank you, good evening, everyone. Prior to the adoption of the proposed fiscal year 2018 annual budget, there are scheduled public hearings to get input from our citizens. The first public hearing was held on May the 15th, the second public hearing was held on May the 17th, and tonight is the last public hearing. Jared Sigmund, our budget officer, and Kristen Robinson, our finance director, are here to give the presentation on this evening.
And while they're coming up, council members Derrick Norton and Andrew Bluestein are both not here tonight. They're, I think Derrick is out of town and Andrew has some unexpected family emergency, so they're not here. Jared, so good to see you again.
Three weeks.
Yep.
It's been so long. This will be a presentation of our FY 18 budget, and as Ms. Sadler Jones mentioned, we've already had a couple of public hearings, the most recent of which was the second public hearing at 12 noon in these council chambers on May the 17th. Tonight is the third public hearing, and then council has decided that a couple of weeks from now, we will actually vote on the adoption of the budget at the June 19th council meeting. I did want to mention some of the topics that were discussed at the second public hearing. We had three citizens in attendance. A lot of the time, we spent talking about the Smyrna Grove redevelopment and the Reed House renovations. We also talked about the average employee benefits package, as well as the water rate increase that is an automatic pass-through from the Cobb Marietta Water Authority. And we spent some time talking about infrastructure spending and how we plan for and budget for those projects. As a result of the public hearing, we did realize that we needed to make an update to our budget, specifically in the debt section. In 2014, we issued revenue bonds of $6,175,000 for public infrastructure and other site prep work at the Hickory Lake apartment complex. That work was necessary for the eventual redevelopment of the site. But those 2014 bonds were reissued in 2016 at lower interest rates. So now we are looking at outstanding debt of about $6.9 million, with the last payment due in fiscal year 2027. As a result of this reissuance, we did reduce the outstanding debt associated with these bonds by about $340,000. And for the immediate upcoming fiscal year, we reduced our FY 18 obligation by about $27,000. So we did make those adjustments in the budget book. At the last public hearing, we mentioned that the departments had submitted requests for 26 new positions, and we were recommending 20 of those positions be approved. We took the time to basically take a harder look at our upcoming obligations, and as a result, we've made some recommendations for the upcoming budget year. If you take a look at the table, you see the positions highlighted in red. These are the positions that we are no longer recommending for the FY 18 budget. You can see that there are six firefighter trainee positions. We had initially talked about funding a second heavy rescue truck at fire station number four, and to go along with those, we'd have the six firefighter trainees. We do already have a heavy rescue truck at station number one, and we've got a medical response vehicle at station four. It's kind of like an SUV type of vehicle now. We will continue to use that vehicle and postpone the acquisition of this heavy rescue truck for now. We are also proposing not to add the risk coordinator for human resources, as well as five crew workers and a truck driver in the recycling and sanitation divisions. We're also recommending that the crew worker for traffic engineering not be added as well. You know, this was a hard process, it was not an easy decision not to recommend these positions. Our department heads have indicated these are personnel they need to continue to perform their functions to the level of service that our citizens expect. But we also know we have a fiscal responsibility, not only to balance the budget this year, but to balance it in future years, and we were not comfortable budgeting 20 new positions this year. So as a result, we will be taking out these 13 positions, it will save us about a half million dollars. And we are left with these six positions totaling about $261,000. So we've got four communications officers in our emergency 911 department. The hiring of these positions is contingent on our getting a signed agreement with the city of Powder Springs to provide their E-911 services. We also have a new inspector for the Bureau of Fire Prevention and a new maintenance tech for the Parks Department. That person will be helping to support the renovated Reed House special events facility that will be operational in FY 18. Just some noteworthy things that we wanted to touch on. Again, property tax revenues are estimated at $20.2 million, that is an 8% increase over FY 17. In most cases, Smyrna residents with a floating homestead exemption will not see an increase. And this does assume that our millage rate will stay constant at 8.99 mils, which it has been since fiscal year 2007. At our first public hearing, we mentioned that we were planning to use a $180,000 from previously committed funds to help support our vehicle replacements in FY 18. As a result of not recommending that second heavy rescue at station four, that was a $110,000 expenditure. So we have made the decision not to use any of that $180,000 from reserves. And to make up that $70,000 of difference, we will be increasing the general fund transfer to vehicle replacement by that amount, $70,000. The good news here is that we get to save that $180,000 for use in a future year. The general fund contingency is now $887,000, and our general fund CIP remains unchanged. We will continue to fund 20 new capital projects at about $1.1 million. And we've got capital projects in our water, sewer, stormwater funds as well at $4.4 million, the majority of which is for our ongoing repairs and maintenance to our utilities' infrastructure. So it all boils down to this, the total proposed budget for fiscal year 2018 is $92,65,846. On this slide, you see the FY 18 proposed budget compared to the FY 17 revised budget. You also see the dollar increase or decrease and the percent change. So in the general fund, we're looking at a $2 million increase, that's a 4.7% increase over the current fiscal year. Special revenue funds are projected to be up $388,000. Capital project funds are down considerably, about $7.5 million. That is due entirely to the timing of various 2016 SPOST projects. The internal service fund is our vehicle replacement fund, you can see it is up $230,000. And next year will be an even bigger year than that, we anticipate. So it's nice to have that 180 in reserve. And then enterprise funds are expected to be down about $4.6 million. And again, this is because we used about $4.5 million from the water sewer fund reserves in FY 17 for a big sanitary sewer outfall project. We were fortunate, we didn't have to issue new debt for that, we had that in reserves and were able to pay cash for that. And in FY 18, we are already expecting to contribute back to cash reserves about $600,000. So we're already starting to kind of rebuild those reserves that we used in the current fiscal year. Altogether, it's $92 million, at about a 9% decrease from FY 17. And that concludes our prepared remarks tonight, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any comments or questions to council? This is a public hearing, I'll entertain anyone that would like to step forward, identify yourself if you want to make a comment or ask a question at this time. Please step forth this time, and we'll go from there.
Good. I have a question on the budget.
Name and address, please.
I'm sorry, what?
Name and address.
Alex Bakary, 3459 Shawnee Trail. Now, the budget is 92 million. The city owes 65 million in bond, bonds. My question is, paying a million dollars a year interest on these bonds, how is the city going to reduce the $65 million bond debt? And I would love someone to explain the bond debt, I don't know how this figures into the budget, but it's associated with money, and I would like to ask that question, if not now, maybe after the meeting or in the near future from somebody, because that's almost 70% of the total budget for a year. And I find that I see no action as far as explaining how they're going to reduce these bond indebtedness that we have now. Thank you.
Anyone else? I would ask, if there's no other question, I would ask, I don't know if we can specifically answer that question.
I'll try to do my best.
Okay.
So, let me move sides. The last bond payment that we are scheduled to pay is in 2030. Based on the issuances, there is an accelerated payment schedule on several of the bonds. We previously had looked at some options of maybe refinancing, refunding some of these bonds to take advantage of better interest rates. When we looked at that, there were provisions on these bonds that did not allow for us to have early retirement of these bonds. The ones that we have been able to retire, as Jared mentioned, the 2014 Smyrna Grove bonds, we were able to refinance those to get a better interest rate. But the other bonds that are outstanding, the provisions on them don't allow us to get a better rate and to refinance those. I think the most significant bond outstanding is probably the Parks and Rec bond, and it was structured so that we made smaller payments at the beginning of that bond schedule, because we had other bonds that were in place that we needed to make sure that we had a consistent debt service. As those are dropping off, the Parks bond payments are increasing. You can see on the bond obligation information that's provided in the budget book that those payments are very minimal on the principal side until 2020, which is fiscal, it's August of 2020, which is fiscal year 21, and then we begin payments of the principal of those, about $2 million annually, for several years until those are paid off.
Our current bond rating, though?
We have, we are AAA, and then we are AA1 with the two rating agencies. So we have a very, very good bond rating.
Okay, Mr. Welch, you want to?
Kristen, essentially what you're saying, the latest bond payoff is 2030. So in 13 years.
We'll be done.
Everything would be paid off.
Yes.
That we, if, unless, and we like, we're likely to go out and get additional bond for one thing or another, which is the way that every city and state operates. But by 2030, all those bonds that are currently on the books will be paid off.
Yes, you will have the oldest series, the 97, will be paid off in fiscal year 20. And then you have two others that are going to be done, one in '22 and one in '23. And then you have the Parks bond, the, and then the Smyrna Grove bonds that are going to be paid off. We show on our bond schedule, if anyone's looking at the bond book, we show in our schedule a 2010 series bond, but based on what we're doing with Smyrna Grove, we're paying those bonds off early. So those bonds should be paid off in the next couple of years.
And Ron Fennell will talk to the cows come home about our rating, but we have one of the highest ra, I don't think there's, nobody else, maybe two or three other cities, we have such a high rating?
We have the highest rating and from one agency, and we have a AA1, which is the second from the other agency. So we have a very, very good bond rating.
Anything else you want to say?
Well, there are only six cities, and I think only nine counties in the state of Georgia with such a distinction, and we happen to be in a city that's in a county with a AA bond rating, and in a state with a AA bond, I mean a AAA bond rating, and those three as a combination are so rare. But we use debt as a tool, and we do it wisely, and as is pointed out, when we have an opportunity to refinance as we take this bond rating history out for an opportunity. But those that are crafted in such a way, it's budgeted for, and that we're on this aggressive payment schedule, I think is a testament to the leaders who came before us, and we just want to continue that tradition.
Any other questions? Based, I mean, I support the changes that staff's recommending for the, for 2018. But we will officially adopt this, June the 19th, I think that's correct, okay? Any other questions? If not, that concludes the public hearing portion, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jared, you did much better. Item 6B under formal business, Resolution 2017-11, approval of Resolution 2017-11 extending the emergency 911 surcharge. Ms. Tammy Sadler Jones, will you please give us the background?
Thank you. The city of Smyrna is operating an enhanced 911 system which facilitates the dispatching of emergency services to residents in the city of Smyrna. In May of 2001, the city council approved a resolution authorizing a monthly 911 charge of $1.50 from telephone subscribers within the service area. This resolution must be affirmed annually to continue the $1.50 charge on telephone subscribers. So this is the reason why this agenda item is on your agenda for tonight.
That's under the Public Safety Committee of Derrick Norton, who is not here. I'll ask Councilmember Ron Fennell to please take care of that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I move approval of item number 6B, which is Resolution 2017-11, approval of Resolution 2017-11 extending the emergency 911 surcharge.
Have motion as second, any further discussion, all those in favor of motion, please vote. Let's approve 5-0, thank you very much. Items 6C under formal business, 2017-191, approve the mayor's appointment of Kelsey Scott to the Parks and Recreation Commission for a term to expire December 2018. I would ask that Mrs. Anulwich, will she please make that motion?
I am happy to make this motion to approve, I'm sorry, yes, to approve the mayor's appointment of Kelsey Scott to the Parks and Recreation Commission for a term to expire in December 2018.
Second. Have motion as second to approve this appointment, all those in favor of the motion, please vote. Let's approve 5-0, thank you very much. Item 6D, 2017-208, approval of the Ward 7 appointment of Jay Barrett Carter to the Smyrna Parks and Recreation Commission for a term to expire December 2017, Mr. Ron Fennell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm proud to introduce an Oak Hills resident, Ward 7, he's with us today, if you'll just raise your hand. Barrett's a good friend and a neighbor, and I'm proud to say he's willing to serve Smyrna in a number of different ways, but this is an opportunity where he'll get a chance to jump in with the team and help with the Parks and Recreation.
Is that a University of Miami shirt you have on with you? Okay, okay, thank goodness.
He's a bear, he's one of the good guys.
I can't say you that far.
I move approval of 2017-208, approval of Jay Barrett Carter to the Smyrna Parks and Recreation Commission for a term to expire December 2017.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second to approve this appointment, any discussion, all those in favor of the motion? Let's approve 5-0, was their biggest victory was against Kentucky's a couple, three years ago? Duke, same thing, Duke, Kentucky. Congratulations, thank you. Item 6C under formal business is E-2017-189, authorizations to allow Southern Landscape Sole Source Provider of the G2 turf planter to perform field work at Chuck Camp Park in the amount of $67,080 using CDBG funds. Ms. Susan Wilkinson? Oh, I'm sorry, the background, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry.
No problem. Staff is recommending authorization to allow Southern Landscape Services LLC, sole source provider of the G2 turf planter, to perform field work in Chuck Camp Park in the amount of $67,080 using CDBG funds. Southern Landscape Services has an exclusive contract with the sole source provider GT Turf 2s to perform turf planning services in the use of the unique and patented GT turf planter on ball fields 1, 2, 3, and the motif use field at Chuck Camp Park. The unique capability to set a finished grade separates this turf planter from others. GT Turf 2s is the only company in the state of Georgia with this equipment and service. They have an exclusive contract with Southern Landscapes to be the sole provider of this equipment. Our Parks and Recreation Director and our purchasing manager have reviewed and approved the sole source brand justification forms submitted by this company, therefore, staff recommends approval.
Ms. Susan Wilkinson?
Well, I'd like to move to approve item 6E, 2017-189, authorization to allow Southern Landscapes, sole source provider of the G2 turf planter, to perform field work in Chuck Camp Park in the amount of $67,080 using CDBG funds, which is community development grant funds.
I motion as second to approve this authorization. Any discussion, all those in favor of motion, please vote. Approve 5-0. Item F, under formal business, is ordinance 2017, is that Q, Q8 or O8? Approval of ordinance 2017-08 to amend city's Smyrna Code of Ordinances for adding chapter 11, racing events, articles 1 and 2. Ms. Tammy Sadler Jones, the background, please.
The city has had an internal process for approving road race events, but not a formal process. The proposed amendment to the city code of ordinance will bring the city in alignment with the practice of many other municipalities that have these same requirements in their city code. Racing event organizers will now have to submit an application first to the Smyrna Police Department, and then the final approval will come from the Office of the Assistant City Administrator. It requires that city departments be involved in the process so that everyone is aware and everyone is communicated in regards to the race event. The ordinance also requires that the race organizer provide a medical services plan to be approved by the Smyrna Fire Department. The proposed race permit will be $250, we are including that as a proposal in our FY 2018 budget, and therefore, staff recommends approval of this ordinance.
It's Ron Fennell, who chairs the Finance Administration Committee, Mr. Fennell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, we're not talking NASCAR here, racing, it's foot racing. We're just trying to make sure that we have a process in place and everybody knows upfront what responsibilities are, and we have an efficient way of dealing with these events that we welcome into the city that typically are done as charity fundraisers for various groups and organizations in the community, and we appreciate them. So I move approval of ordinance 2017-08 to amend city of Smyrna Code of Ordinances by adding chapter 11, racing events, article 1 and 2.
I motion as second to approve this ordinance to amend the city code. Any other discussion, all those in favor, motion. Let's approve 5-0. Item G, 2017-195, adoption of resolution supporting the South Cobb Quarter Improvement Plan. Ms. Jones, the background, please.
In April 2015, the city council authorized the submission of an application to the Georgia Department of Transportation for the funding of a transportation and land use study of the South Cobb Drive Quarter. In December 2015, the city was notified that a grant in the award amount of $120,000 was received from GDOT. The grant required a 20% match from the city, which amounted to $30,000. After completion of the city's request for proposal process, Croy Engineering Consulting Team was chosen to conduct the study. They initiated the study process in September of 2016. The study area includes both sides of South Cobb Drive from Wendy Hill Road South to Concord Road, which is approximately 1.5 miles. The study focused on analyzing transportation issues, opportunities and challenges along the aforementioned quarter, and makes specific recommendations and proposals for addressing those issues. The study also addressed land use issues along the study quarter and made recommendations related to those issues as well.
This files under the committee chair, Mr. Doug Stoner, who was the chair of the Community Development, Mr. Stoner.
Thank you, Mayor, very quickly, this is kind of one of our final studies that we've been doing this past year and that we're concluding, but we had planned on adopting it this evening, but due to the fact that we have some potential updated demographic. but due to the fact that we have some potential updated demographic data that's now become available to us, working with the consultants, we've decided, and I'm going to make a motion, that we table this to our June 19th meeting, two weeks from now, to make the formal adoption. So they're able to include that, verify and update that demographic information prior to us, you know, providing this, officially adopting this and also providing it to the state of Georgia. So it's not critical that we have to do it this night, but definitely want to do it on our next meeting. So I'll make a motion at this time to table the adoption of a resolution supporting the South Cobb Quarter Improvement Plan until June 19th, 2017.
Second.
Motion as second, table June 19th, 2017. All those in favor of the motion? It's approved 5-0. Item six H, under Formal Business, AJR 2017-01. Authorize the City of Smyrna to enter into an agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation for the installation of a state-funded HAWK, High-Intensity Activated Crosswalk Signal, located in South Cobb Drive approximately 120 feet south of Plaza Drive, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. Ms. Tammy Satter Jones, the background, please.
This request is an authorization for the City of Smyrna to enter into an agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation for the installation of a HAWK signal. The signal will be paid for by the state of Georgia. The cost will be approximately $80,000 to $100,000. GDOT, pardon me, will cover all costs for the materials, labor, and installation of the crossing. The city will only be responsible for the repairs, maintenance, and power costs for the device, which is typical for all traffic signals that we currently maintain along the South Cobb Quarter.
This is in the Ms. Susan Wilkinson's district. Ms. Wilkinson.
At this time, I'd like to move to approve item six H, AGR 2017-01. Authorize the City of Smyrna to enter into an agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation for the installation of a state-funded HAWK, which stands for a High-Intensity Activated Crosswalk Signal, located on South Cobb Drive approximately 120 feet south of Plaza Drive, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents.
Second.
Have motion as second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? It's approved 5-0. Item six I, under Formal Business, 2017-207. Approval to change the Mayor and Council Meeting Date from Monday, July the 3rd, 2017, to Wednesday, July the 5th, 2017, due to the 4th of July being on a Tuesday. I don't know how much background you want to give on that, Ms. Tammy Satter Jones, but you're welcome to do that.
All right, I'll give just a little bit. As the mayor mentioned, we will be changing the meeting to Wednesday, July the 5th, at 7:00 PM. Also, all city offices will remain open on Monday, July the 3rd, but we will be closed in observation of the Independence Day holiday on Wednesday, pardon me, Tuesday, July 4th.
Mr. Ron Finley, who chairs Finance Administration.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move approval to change the Mayor and Council Meeting Date from Monday, July 3rd, to Wednesday, July 5th, 2017, due to the July 4th holiday on Tuesday.
Motion as second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved 5-0. Item seven is commercial building permits. We have none out of made his consent agenda. Ms. Jones, will you please read the consent agenda for council's approval?
The consent agenda is as follows. Item A, Approval of the Mayor and Council Meeting Minutes for May 15th, 2017. Item B, Approval of the pre-council meeting minutes for May 15th, 2017. Item C, Approval of the Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes for May 11th, 2017. Item D, Award RFP 17-028. Pretty Branch Sanitary Sewer Outfall Rehabilitation to the Lowest Bidder Site Engineering Incorporated for $325,909.0 and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents.
Here, motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion as second, approve the consent agenda. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved 5-0. Item nine is committee reports. We'll start tonight. Mr. Ron Finley, Mr. Finley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have three items. I want to thank the staff, the department heads of finance, and I want to thank the mayor and council members who had input into the preparation of the budget. I do appreciate everybody's hard work, particularly the two finance committee staffers who went through and through and through aspects of the budget, and we appreciate the ongoing conservative approach that Smyrna takes to our budgeting process. Secondly, I want to announce that your Smyrna Sharks swimmers are really doing well again this year, and a previously undefeated team for 17 years fell to the Smyrna Sharks last Thursday, and I'm proud to have a couple of young folks on the team, as is Councilman and Councilwoman Anulowicz, a proud parent of swimmers as well. We're pretty excited about what's happening in our Parks and Recreation Department, and our new Parks Director has given us some guidance and leadership, and we appreciate that. And having a full complement of the commission, we're looking forward to the next iteration of what's coming out of there. And thirdly, the Cobb Municipal Association has its monthly meeting next Tuesday night in Acworth. It's just been my privilege the last couple of years to be the Chair of Cobb Municipal Association. It's our opportunity to network with other city officials and learn best practices, and hopefully, we can share a little bit of our successes across those platforms. With that, Mr. Mayor, I conclude my report.
Mr. Doug Stoner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One thing I wanted to do is announce, remind folks, we were just talking about studies. One of the things that we also have going on over at Community Development is the requirement that we update our comprehensive land use plan by the state every 10 years, and that process has started earlier this, back in the winter, and has continued through the spring. And this coming Thursday, June 8th, from 6:30 to 8:30, will be a public meeting that we really want to encourage the public to come out. There's going to be a Bronner Hall, and this is an interactive process. No one's going to be giving a presentation. The process is to engage the public, get their input, as we put together this updated comprehensive land use plan. Also, you can go online to guidesmyrna.com, which is our website that specifically talks about these issues as we go through the comprehensive land use plan. So definitely would like to encourage folks to come out to the meeting, if you can, on Thursday night, June 8th, from 6:30 to 8:30 at Bronner Hall. I yield, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Susan Wilkinson.
Thank you. I have several announcements. I want to encourage everyone that's interested in participating in the summer reading program at the library to check out the calendar on the website. There's lots of events for all different ages. And also, I want to announce that that the Summer Concert Series begins this Saturday, June 10th, and there are still tables available. If you want to rent a table, you can call the Wolf Center or stop by the Wolf Center, and each table comes with six chairs, and the band this Saturday night is the Get It Right Band. And the telephone number at the Wolf Center is 678-631-5541. And the other thing I wanted to speak about was the garden tour that was held recently. It was a very successful event, and I wanted to thank all the people that entered their gardens in the tour and all the volunteers that helped to make that event successful. It was a lot of fun. Thank you. With that, I yield.
Mr. Corky Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to announce that I have a Ward Seven meeting to discuss the Craftmark Development rezoning. That rezoning is at the intersection of North Cooper Lake and Spyglass Court. The date is June 22nd at West Smyrna Swim and Tennis at 7:00. Just encourage anybody that's interested in talking about any problems or positive aspects of that development, if you would, please come out and bring them with you that evening. With that, Mr. Mayor, I yield.
Mr. Chair Anulowicz.
Thank you. Yes, I'd also like to remind people that Thursday evening, if they can stop by the Guide Smyrna event, that's going to be a great way to make sure your thoughts have been known and documented about the Smyrna Comprehensive Plan process. I've noted before that when we went through the vision process several years ago, a lot of folks had a lot of questions and comments and things, about things that were land use issues, and we said, you know, this is the vision, not a comp plan. This is the comp, this is the comp plan. It's the comprehensive plan. So this is definitely an event to come to because there is a lot that's changing in Smyrna and how redevelopment is happening, the ways that we're being approached, and the ideas that we're being approached with for redevelopment. So I definitely encourage you to come to that meeting. And I also want to commend the Smyrna Sharks. I'm headed to that meet as soon as we adjourn. I'll be swapping out my dress for a purple shirt. That's the color of the Smyrna Sharks, and some flip flops, and we'll be headed over to Tolson Park. They're doing a great job, and their coaches and the team board are also doing a fantastic job, and they should be commended. With that, I yield.
That concludes committee reports. Show cause hearing. We don't have anything, citizens' input. We got some folks that have signed up. Alec Bakri, 3459 Shawnee Trail, comments.
First of all, I'd like to compliment the sounds that you had tonight so we can hear people clearly, as in the past, we had a difficulty. Since you answered my question on the budget, I'm going to mention something that's not been addressed by this council that is a problem in this city. And believe it or not, it's the coyote problem. I had my neighbor out at noon with her small dog in her yard, and the coyote came up 20 feet behind her, grabbed her small dog, and killed it. She chased it and got her dog back. Gainesville has now got a program. They've brought in 160 coyotes and working with the Department of Natural Resources to show you how serious this problem is everywhere in the state, that if you bring in five, you get a free hunting license for the rest of your life. I find that very interesting. Paulding County, if you bring one into this animal shelter, they give you a $25 check. Smyrna has not addressed the problem, and I just want to make you aware that maybe if someone finds a den in the yard, you can work with a trapper on an ad hoc basis to eliminate them, because I see them every week over on Village Barkway Ridge Road running around. And because California's had some fatalities out there, kids being killed by two or three coyotes attacking them. So with all this building, it is a problem in Smyrna. And it's somewhere down the line. You might think about how you could work with the public when they do have a problem with coyotes, not relying on Cobb County, but one of the licensed rehabilitators of the state on an ad hoc basis to eliminate them. This is a serious problem now coming up in Smyrna, and I want to throw it out for the first time, making people aware of it, because people should be able to have their small dogs and cats out in the yard and feel comfortable without having them being attacked. I had two, I have two small dogs, and they were attacked over at Lake Drive, believe it or not, behind the dog park around 11:00 in the morning. Two of them came after them. Took all I could do to get my dogs away from them, and they want them to chase them, that way they kill them. So just a thought for you on that. And secondly, I thank you, Mayor, for bringing it up last Thursday night to have this vote on whether the signs go up on Smyrna, on Shawnee Trail again, or stay off. This is way overdue to have a simple two-minute vote. And why it didn't happen tonight, when you recommended it, I don't know. But I'd sure like to see it in the next meeting, that you have a vote, so we have closure. To me, I feel the city owes the city people an apology for not even asking for any input before they were taken down. I feel you should correct the wrong by at least doing the vote according to the charter. Only takes two minutes, and I hope in the next meeting, you finally put closure on this so I don't have to bring it up again. Thank you.
Keith Bentley, 2651 Gilbert Street, Pedestrian Safety.
Good evening.
Evening.
I'm Keith Bentley, and I live in the Williams Park neighborhood, and ordinarily, I wouldn't have come up here tonight for this meeting, but because we, a little background, I mean, obviously, we have, our neighborhood has been working with the city, city engineer primarily, Ms. Anulowicz, and I've talked to Mayor Bacon a few times on a couple of issues about traffic issues we have in our neighborhood, mostly having to do with this high speed going through the neighborhood with cut-through traffic. And other issues we have are just congestion at our particular troubled intersection over here, across, directly across from Market Village. But, and there's been some progress made. The city's done some things, and we appreciate those things. We've been talking about some of these issues for over three years now, some of these things. But we do appreciate what's been done, but we have been somewhat frustrated by how long it's taken on some of these things. Last night, we had another accident over at Williams Park, the park with the pergola there, where this happened about, close to midnight, I understand. But basically, a car left the road, and it went through the park, finally hit a tree, and was totaled. And that's really like the third time that's happened over the last two or three years. I don't, I can find the exact dates, but it's, so it's, it's an issue. And it's right where there's a lot of, during the daytime, of course, and in the early evening, there's a lot of pedestrian traffic on that sidewalk. And people, young mothers pushing baby carriages, all that. People walking back and forth to come over here for dinner, whatever. And I've had a number of people tell me they were really scared a couple of times when they were on that curve and a car comes flying around the corner. The city recently put up some flashing lights there that say, "Go in too fast," if you're going more than 25. And I see cars hit their brakes when they see that. Obviously, the person last night didn't see that, or didn't respond to it. So I came up here tonight, one, well, one more thing. As a background, back in April, it was our last meeting with Ms. Anulowicz and Eric Randall. It was a good meeting, very productive discussion on a whole lot of things about traffic over there in our neighborhood. And I understand other things are planned. But one of the things we talked about in that was a way to let the neighborhood participate and maybe funding some of these things that would, light chokers or chicanes, those kind of traffic calming devices, so we could slow down traffic on Roswell and probably Spring Street as well. And my understanding is there's not really a process in place for that. And what makes me think about this even more as a way to kind of expedite some of these projects is back in the spring, we did co-fund a project with the Parks Department. And it was much, the landscaping project, it was a few thousand dollars, but it seemed to be the fact that we put in some money, the city put in some money and some labor, and we got that project done faster than it might otherwise have been if we had just been up here asking the city to do the whole thing. So I don't know what the process should be. I'm not sure what the right traffic calming thing should be. But I wanted to bring some, I urge you to bring some focus on that process. I'm sure other neighborhoods in Smyrna would be willing to contribute some things. I'm sure others are having similar problems with either traffic going too fast or cut-through traffic or whatever. And as we increase our density here in the city, I don't see that getting any better. It's going to get worse. So if we can help, we just want to help move things along, and that's really what I had to say this evening.
Thank you very much. Susan Bentley, 2651 Gilbert Street, Pedestrian Safety. I'm going to listen to her.
I support everything my husband says. Plus, I'm here for the, all the mothers that couldn't come because they're getting their babies to sleep. Several of them have told me they were scared out of their minds. And I know Ms. Anulowicz knows the curve, and Eric Randall does, too. And I guess I've always wanted one of those metal things, guardrail things, but Ms. Anulowicz just explained how that- metal things, guardrail things, but Ms. Anulowitsch just explained how that's probably not the best thing and suggested some other ways. We just need something there. It is frightening. That's the same place where the cab hit it and went up in the air, crossed the street, and became pinned on someone's fence. I don't know. So anyway, help us and help all the little babies. I tried to bring some up here and hold them so y'all could see them, but they all had to get a bath, so thank you very much.
Al Graves, 1079 Pinehurst Drive, Water Department.
Al Graves, 1079 Pinehurst Drive, Southeast. And I've been sort of fighting a developing problem along. I was in a casual conversation with some citizens of Smyrna, and the water department came up in the conversation, so you can tell we were hunting for something, hard for something to talk about. But anyway, there was two, uh, two of the people mentioned to me that asked me if I had noticed that the increase in the water rate was going up again, and I said, "Yes, as far as I know, it's the annual rate." And they said, "Well, it concerns us a little bit." And I said, "Well, it's been more or less been routine." And they said, "Well, listen." Said, "We know of a couple of residents of Smyrna that are on the Cobb County water system," and said, "Do you know whether they are billed exactly the same amount that the regular customers of Smyrna?" And so I said, "Well, no, I actually don't know. I've never, I wasn't aware of this situation where you had county service to Smyrna citizens." So I went home, and it, I got to thinking about it, which is dangerous. But anyway, through methods, I found out that actually there is 800, between 800 and 1,000 citizens, legal citizens of Smyrna, who are currently receiving a portion, at least, now I don't know the exact breakdown, but water, and I don't know if sewer is involved and so forth, and are billed apparently from the county. So again, I thought, "Well, this is a significant amount," since I think there's around 15,000 registered customers, and, and then, most of you know, that know me very well, I've been a constant foe of this $15 basic bill. And the last time when this started, I had checked with Cobb County, and they currently had a $5 base charge. If you want to keep, hear the rest of it, I'll tell you. If you want me to come back next time, I'll be glad to tell you what it is. But I'm, I think that, I'm not positive that we have a problem, but I think that it is significant enough, if there is a differential between the payment schedule that the people on county water is receiving is lower than the current bills we're paying in Smyrna, there's an unfair treatment involved here. And I just wonder, I, I'd never heard this reference before, but if you subtract $10 or $5 from the current bill that we're paying and the storm fund, stormwater fund we're contributing to, some citizens of Smyrna is being subjected to this taxation unfairly. And I, if I'm wrong, I would certainly appreciate an answer from someone, because I don't care if it's one person or 20 persons. Y'all have a duty to teach, treat each citizen of Smyrna equally, and this does not sound to me like that's happening. Now, I don't know if the sanitation is included in the bill. In fact, I just don't really know. I'm not privy to the information that these people are receiving from the county, and I think the least need to be done is somebody that has access to more appropriate information needs to look at this and see, and I can't believe that you people as a governing body would not feel an obligation to at least equalize this treatment. And incidentally, I heard that you folks had received the $75,000 report that you commissioned to revise the water department.
It was 85,000.
Uh-huh.
It's 85,000.
Okay, well, I am not as involved in it as y'all were. But anyway, I haven't heard, but I, through the rumor mill, I heard that one of the main considerations that had been discussed was the possible raising of this $15 baseline bill. And so the people that I had talked to originally were highly agitated, and me too, to be quite frankly. I never have felt like it was an equal requirement. So with that, I'll close for now, and I hope, I don't expect a direct response from the mayor and the council, but I wish our new city administrator would somehow work up a report from the input for these people that know this information, and let me know.
Okay, all right.
And I can get rid of this aching pain in my stomach. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I just wanted to say something, that there was, somebody had a birthday this past Wednesday. In fact, there were two people. One person is our, our city clerk, Terry Graham, and then the other person, I think, understand is Al Graves. He had a birthday on Wednesday, and I don't know if he would, it would be okay with him if, uh...
91, it's going to be wrong.
91, yes.
He said, he told me before the meeting, he did not want that to be brought up. I didn't get it. Did you go to the party? Happy birthday to both y'all.
Yeah, happy birthday.
Ms. Jones, anything else?
Nothing.
Mr. Cochran. Miss, Miss Birthday Girl, Heather be thy name. For no other business be brought before this body, I declare this meeting adjourned at 7:56. Where's Dad at?